Okay. Okay, hi, everybody. We're going to start. Now, we have a quorum. We don't have everybody present and we'll call to order at 7:02. And do a roll call of everybody saying their name who is here and Monica will write that down and then we will go to the approval of the two minutes. Oh, good. Here comes Barbara back from her worldly adventures. Has everybody seen Barbara's travelogue she's been posting? I feel like I've been to Italy and Constantinople and every place. Okay, roll call. Welcome back, Barbara.
Okay.
There you are. Okay. How's your jet lag?
I'm not all here right now and I just, I've been teaching all afternoon. I just made dinner and I have to eat it. So if I take my screen off, it's just to save you guys from seeing me eating. I'll still be here listening.
I want to know what you were drinking on that boat. Oops, I'm not supposed to say that. This is a public meeting. I did look up a couple of recipes, however.
We can talk afterwards.
We'll talk afterwards. Okay. Monica, do we need to say everybody's names? Are you just going to take note of who's here?
I'm just taking note.
Okay. Approval of the minutes of September 14th. Is there anybody who has any questions about the minutes of September 14th? Somebody please move the acceptance of the minutes of September 14th.
I'll move.
Barbara move.
I second.
Amy, second. Okay. Approval of the minutes of October 12th. Will somebody please, somebody else? Janine, how would you like to move the minutes of October 12th? To say so move.
So move.
Okay, and who would like to second that? Esme will second that. Wonderful. Okay. All right, well, I, we're going to kind of regroup tonight because we have one thing coming up that we need some participation in. We had one event that we had a little participation in, but everybody didn't come to and was very good. And I want us tonight to refocus on the purpose of this commission. And what we, why individual members have joined up to figure out why, what do you want to do here? Why does this matter to you? So if anybody who is willing, I would really appreciate hearing from you. Why did you join the Human Rights Commission? Why did you apply to be appointed to the Human Rights Commission? And why does it matter to you? So that we can get some sense of what we ought to be putting our energy into based on the things that you really care about. Barbara, go ahead.
I joined because I wanted to be an advocate for people that needed an advocate in town. And that's why I've been anxiously trying to find out what problems there might be in town that we can do something about. And that's why I wanted to be on the outreach committee. And that's, I think we're moving in that direction where we may actually find some things and my primary thing at this point would be affordable housing, I think seems to be the thing that might be the biggest problem we have in Mansfield.
Yeah, and it is going, there is action going on all over the state about that. So we're going to come back to that. That was the thing we agreed on in the beginning. Okay, wonderful. Oh, good. Here's Sabrina. All right, who would like to go next? Why did you apply to be on this thing? Anybody? Esme, go ahead. Unmute yourself.
I definitely applied because I felt like there was a bit of a disconnect between what was happening at the town level and what I was experiencing and what I saw in school and just around town. I felt like I didn't know a ton of what was being done outside, like I'm part of other social justice groups, but like I didn't know what was being done at the town level and I wanted to make sure things were happening.
Can you give me a specific thing you were thinking about?
Yeah, I mean, part of it is like youth being involved in town decisions. And another part of it is definitely making sure, like Barbara said, voices, all voices are being heard, or at least all voices have a vessel through which they can be heard, even if they themselves are not speaking out.
Okay, so it's kind of like knowing what's bothering people and for people who weren't speaking up, helping that process
Yeah.
into the public. Okay, and Sabrina agrees with you because she's really good head nodder. Okay, who else? Why did you join? What do you really care about, about the mission of this organization? Amy, go ahead.
So I think similarly to what others have said, I was interested in being an advocate. Certainly, I am aware of I've been aware of different incidents that maybe have come up and was hoping that this would be a place where we could discuss and consider how to best approach you know, issues in town. And certainly because of the work I'm doing with the students, I have a personal investment in, you know, being a liaison in some ways between what we're seeing at EO and what maybe the town is seeing. Being able to voice concerns coming out of the building. I know certainly we worked a little bit with Lou and with Mrs. Knoyer, with Sharon. And I think too, just having a child who has had not the best experiences in public schools here and seeing some of my students feeling similarly, I think that's another reason. And then last but not least, my dad was always very civically engaged and was very much an activist. And I wanted to kind of make him proud.
Okay, I have a question for clarification because a couple of times what's coming up is what's in the schools.
Yeah, so I think
What is that? Is it like harassment? Is it being left out? Is it not enough services? What kind of stuff is the problem?
I think there's a variety of things. I know that it's being addressed and I know that change is slow. I think there's this perception on behalf of administration that there's a lot of transparency. And yet, many of us, many teachers who are not necessarily closely involved with the EDJ, the Equity Diversity and Justice Group, have no idea what is going on in the building. We had one good year after a petition went out and was made public. It went to the Board of Ed, it went to the town, and it went to the administration. And that's when they formed the Equity Diversity and Justice Group. We had a really good year of a lot of really positive, very strong professional development. And honestly, there's nothing, we really haven't done anything since. So you know, and I just, I think last year or two, they had, I think this was a beautiful gesture. They had an event where they invited people from the Equity Diversity and Justice Group. Janine, you were there, I think, right? Yes, because your husband was there too. And they didn't personally invite any of the diversity hires that they'd done. And so I kind of felt like, you know, sometimes somebody, sometimes people need that personal face-to-face connection to feel like they're welcome there, right? To feel like they've, so they had a blanket. First, it went out, the first invitation went out to the people.
Okay, Amy, I'm going to stop you because I want to get around to everybody's.
Okay.
Those are the kinds of things that are coming.
Okay, Quincy, what about you? What do you want to really do? Why are you here?
Yeah, so I joined. I mean, I have, sorry, I've been involved with human rights work my entire life. You know, I'm one of 16 kids bearing disabilities from all over the world. But outside of that, you know, I work with the NAACP and Legal Regis Committee, and it's important for me to be involved in the Mansfield on a town level. Being a black woman in this, in this town, I many times looked at the Human Rights Committee on the online site and I felt, okay, well, where is the diversity being represented here? Would I feel welcome to talk to, you know, as a black woman, it's more comfortable as a black person, it's more comfortable for black people sometimes to talk to other black people about racial issues. And so I wanted to be able to be a sounding board when we have, you know, people who are wanting to talk about issues of racial inequality, minority, you know, minority teacher recruitment. I mean, there's so many things that are in the black community that are, that are, you know, they're hard for people to talk about and they're hard for people to bring up and especially people in the community. And living in Mansfield, I knew it was important for me to be able to be a face. And, you know, importantly, a face, but importantly, a sounding board. And if there are issues in the community, then to be able to bring it to the, you know, bring them and, and, and to be able to have these conversations with people that maybe might not have these conversations otherwise. So that's a big thing for me.
Okay, great. And I'm jumping right from there into some kind of programming that we could do and you could help and maybe stimulate. So let's get back to that one again. All right, who else? Janine, why'd you join up?
I think it's kind of like a smack ring of almost everybody. Definitely wanting to target the younger generation. I'm not saying that there's no hope for, you know, older individuals. But if we can work with the children and as Amy said, with the diversity, equity, inclusiveness, you know, that's always been my heart and soul since I can remember. Educating, helping people understand about human rights. And it's not just all, you know, white human rights. It's everybody's human rights. You know, it's, it's all across the board. I was looking at the, the housing thing and I'm like, good heavens, that's right. It's about 77% white individuals here in Mansfield. You know, but yet Mansfield will say, we're a diverse town. We're not diverse. We're, you know, we're only diverse because of the college students that come here. If you look over the broad spectrum, it's, it's white. You know, it's, it's white America. And as even Debbie Irving had said, you know, the small town, New England town, you know, it's, it's, it's white. And then coming from somewhat of a interesting family with, you know, my father being basically racist and my mother, an advocate for, you know, human rights and for people with different colors and everything, you know, it was kind of interesting. And now marrying someone who's from a different culture. So, you know, my, my children are not black. They're kind of brown, so they're technically brown, but not quite. They always sit in that little, that odd area. But then I also have my heart and soul towards people with impairments. You know?
Right, I was going to say, race, quote unquote, race isn't the only, even if we're all white, we have people with disabilities, we have gay people, we have people of different religions, we have a lot of diversity.
And I'll show you right now. Here's my two hearing aids.
Yeah.
So it's like, you know, I, I, I see it all, I hear it all. And then when I see the little, the wee ones, the little kids, we're not now with the Mansfield Elementary Schools, I see the diversification because it was pockets of, because of where the schools were located.
Right.
But there's not diversity with teachers, you know, so the kids can't really connect with that, that diversification.
Okay, so we're talking about, you want to acknowledge who is here, who isn't here, and give everybody a voice. And that's what I'm hearing from everybody. Okay. Well, we got two more people. Derek, why did you join?
Sorry, my parents.
You have a wobbly connection. You want to try again? You're frozen. Okay.
This happens to me every time.
I know it does. Then you check out your, your connection. Okay, so why'd you join up? Just a quickie.
Well, in short, I I essentially wanted a way for myself to kind of be an advocate for it's actually kind of a lot of the things that the people around here have said before. I wanted to be an advocate for for, you know, people who have kind of marginalized or otherwise otherwise have not, I guess.
Okay. That's good.
Felt as compromised.
And that is, that's what's the common theme. Okay, Sabrina, you're the last one.
Hi, all. I joined because I'm a minority female. I'm Spanish speaking. I love the idea of representation in our world. I'm a mother and teacher of children with disabilities and I want to show them that it's not enough to be a passive person, but you've got to be active and on the right side of history. So I'm here for myself when I was little, who didn't really have a voice. And I'm here for the next generation.
Okay. Now, I'm going to ask you what you all heard from each other that we have in common. Because we need to funnel this down into something that we can all get excited about and make projects out of it and activities out of it that we are so motivated, we're going to show up and do things. So what did you hear that we all had in common?
I, I heard that everybody wants to be an advocate.
Yeah, and what do we do to do that?
That's the question. That's the big hundred dollar question, isn't it? We've been trying to find out. We sent out the survey. We have the suggestion boxes. We're trying to find where the issues are. The only one that I see that's come up over and over again is affordable housing.
So I have, I have an issue. I can definitely
Go ahead.
Um, so this past weekend was the 57th Annual Convention of the NAACP. And so we were, we were able to sit down and to to sit down in different seminars and learn about different issues happening across Connecticut. And one of the, one of the seminars I sat in was talking about minority teacher recruitment. And this is something I, I really hadn't known too much about. So I'm definitely not going to act like an expert, but I can share with you what I learned. They had done a survey of, of various schools across Connecticut, some inner city, and one was interesting because they did stores. And they did the disparity between students of color and teachers, teachers of color, and also the, the push for minority recruitment. So they were able to actually get information from the different educational hiring centers and to see how much, how many people are applying, how many people are getting hired, how many people are passing the test minorities and, and comparing it to white people. And it was astounding, the disparity. It seems as if stores is not pushing for minority recruitment really, really at all. And especially when we're looking at teachers in our state, you know, they're looking oftentimes out of state. And when we're looking at in our state and, and, I mean, I've, I've, I have actually never had a teacher that was anything other than white in my life. And, you know, I've lived in very white areas, but I can definitely say that the minority teacher recruitment is, is the, the numbers are interesting and I would love to share them with you. I actually asked for a copy of the PowerPoint. But it's not representative of our student body. And so I think that's something that we could definitely focus on. Even in terms of not just race, like you said, Jane, but we're talking about disabilities, we're talking about religion, we're talking about, you know, we're talking about, are we representative of the student body or of the, of the people that we serve? And it seems from the information presented to me that we're not. Obviously, I'm not an expert on this and I want to know more, but it's something I thought you guys would be interested in kind of hearing about.
Yep, and you're right. And I know that's true. And we've had Peter here, who's the superintendent of Mansfield, talking about a little bit, but so far, and there's something in addition to recruiting and passing tests and everything else, and that goes back to the teachers' colleges. And I worked in a school of education and I know how they keep brown people out of the pipeline. And it's called standards. These stupid tests they give. But once they get into the school, how they get treated so that people feel like they want to stay. Because you can hire until you're blue in the face and they quit the next year because it's so uncomfortable. And that is a chronic problem. We have a good school of education down at Eastern and it has a very diverse population. And we don't have any official relationship with them. We could be getting student teachers in from Eastern very quickly. And we can change the population of the teaching staff in Mansfield and nobody seems interested in doing that. So that's another piece of that whole thing. It happens to be one I'm very interested into. Amy, you know something about that too?
Right. And actually, I'm curious to hear from Esme first because that's me also, if I may defer to her and then I can piggyback if you may. I was just going to ask Quincy, are there people who are applying for these positions and getting denied them? Or are people also not applying because of the disparity too?
So that was something I saw was that people are applying, they're not getting hired. However, we're not able to reach out to these, because I asked that exact question. I was like, can I get some more information on this? And we're not able to reach out and say, okay, well, who, who passed their test, who passed their, we can't, you, you can't know that information. So maybe they're not passing their test. Maybe they're not, you know, we don't know what the, the in-between part, but in terms of people being hired, it was, it was about 30% of minority applicants are being hired, which is so low. Like so low compared to 78% where we have Caucasian hires. So I just thought, I saw that and was like, okay, that disparity is huge. You know, I mean, stores isn't, doesn't have a huge, a huge, you know, when you compare, they're comparing to Bridgeport, New Haven, you know, the population, the, the numbers are more stark and you're able to see it better. But living in stores, I'm like, oh, okay. I, I, you know, I know this area and I know that we have, we have, we're, you know, tuned into Eastern and Yukon and we have such an ability to have a huge, I mean, we have diversity here everywhere. You, you know, you walk, you walk down the street and we have diversity. And, you know, and how, how is that represented? How can we get that represented? I just immediately was, okay.
Yeah.
Can I, can I? I mean, I know that a lot of people moved to Mansfield because they want their kids to be in a school with more diversity because other towns around us don't have the kids that we have at the university. And I've heard that many, many times over my years teaching the Suzuki program. And I'm wondering, is the commission, Human Rights Commission, if maybe we can make a recommendation to the town that they should try to encourage minority hiring in the school system? Is that something we could do?
We can do it, but they'll tell you they're already doing it and they're not.
Well, we can tell them that they're not doing it because we've
We can tell, we can say, we appreciate your efforts, but we'd like to see your results. That's what the problem is. Go ahead, Amy.
So if I may, and I think Janine may know more about this too, being part of the EDJ group, but um, so, and certainly Quincy, I I, I agree. I've seen some of that data and I actually had some, an interesting conversation with one of the diversity hires last year, who's this who's a really neat young woman in, or young person, uses Mix, our first, our first teacher to openly be non-binary on staff. Mix Lynn was hired last year to teach English. And I am their team person. So anyway, but we had an interesting conversation the other day because they were recruited at a diversity event. And was was very excited to start at youth myth and when, and said that the first day when they walked in for the first like big all-staff meeting, walked in and looked around and thought, okay, so I am a diversity. There is no other diversity here. And how lonely that was for, and, and shocking because they felt a little misled. So I do know that some things, and I'm saying this because I, I myself am concerned still about this, in the process, the progress and the process. They, so another incident that she had that was interesting is that, or that they had was the first couple of days when they were getting acclimated and meeting other people. Somebody met them and said, oh, welcome. Are you excited to be in the math department? And they said, I'm an English teacher. Again, right, a cultural bias thinking, okay, here we have a woman who's Asian. They must be teaching math. Likewise, last year I had an intern with a Spanish last name. And one of the administrators said, you must be so excited to have this person working with you because they speak Spanish. And I said, actually, they don't. She's passively fluent. She can understand Spanish, but she's not a fluent Spanish speaker. So these, these assumptions that continue to go on as well. So there's some work being done. It is on the radar. And I know, again, Janine can say more. It's on the radar of the Equity Diversity and Justice Group. We, I, there was not a lot of success this year with diversity hires. There were a couple. But a couple's not right? And I, I don't know what all the issues are, but I totally agree with you. It would be lovely in so many ways to diversify our staff. I think the other thing that concerns me too, I think at EO and Esme and Derek can certainly talk about their perceptions. There is, it's been exciting for me to have heritage speakers. It's been exciting for me to have certainly a more robust population of just in terms of, well, everything than I did prior. But we also are a school that's a little bit we don't always see all those students who are in, who are representing our diversity. Because we've got the ag program and that recruits heavily from particularly Wyndham and Lomantic. And, and they have a lot of classes that are separate from the rest of the students. And in fact, sometimes I've had people have the reaction if there's a student from maybe Columbia, Connecticut, or a student from and not really from Columbia Coventry or some of the other sending towns who isn't black or brown. And they'll say like, wait a minute, you're, you're an ag kid. So there's also that within the school. We've got a kind of, we've got really three different schools. We've got the depot campus. We've got the ag program and then we've got EO. So I don't know how you saw any of these things, but I do think it merits looking at them. And Janine, I don't know if you want to say anything more about the hiring. Sorry.
Um, wait, Monica wants to say something. Monica, go ahead.
Okay, so just before we get too, too much into this, do we want to add this as an agenda item? Because I don't know where it fits on our agenda right now, so we can add it? Or we can add it to a future agenda, but I think we need to do one of those.
Okay, thank you. All right, here's, here's what I think. I think the first thing we ought to be doing is talking to Peter Dart. And I don't think we ought to invite him to a meeting. I would like to meet with him privately and I would like to take a couple of you who are free during the day to go with me. If you can get out of work or your, or work is in school and you can say this is a school-related thing. And get a better picture of what they're already doing so we can find out other things that we might do to suggest. And then we can put this on the agenda for next time. And I'd like to do that and ask for a couple of volunteers to set up a meeting with Peter with me. Janine, what do you want to say?
Going on with what Amy had said, I know there was the team that came in and they made observations and then they made recommendations to the Board of Ed. And the Board of Ed said, this is what we found, this is what needs to be done. And it was kind of like across the board between the hiring and the students and the testing and whatnot. So they kind of gave over. And they said, okay, these are our suggestions. These are our things that we see where you, you know, you need to maybe develop an advisory team and come up with that. And that's kind of like where the DEI, the diversity, equity, inclusiveness advisory team kind of fits in. So that's where we start thinking about. And that's just what, not even a year in the making. Maybe, no, not quite a year, looking at it. And I know our next meeting, we were talking about the winter celebration. And how do we want to how does DEI want to be representative, represented like that? You know, what should we do? People who are concerned about it being Christmas, you know, oriented, should we have other, you know, other groups? That sort of thing. But no, a team did come in and they made their recommendations of what needed to be addressed. And how are we going to be dressed? You know, how are we going to start doing that? But yeah.
Yeah, I was there and I heard that report and I think, again, I would like to get a volunteer or two to set up a meeting with Peter with me to say, where are you with this? And how can we be of assistance and support to you in moving forward? Because my impression of what the team did was it was all structural. It was an assessment. It wasn't interpersonal. And interpersonal is where things crack. Because people say stupid things to people like, you know, aren't you happy to be in the math department? So is, can I? So is, can I just get a couple of volunteers and pin you down? And then we're going to go back to our agenda so that Monica feels like we're doing the right thing.
I'm willing to volunteer for this. I think, don't we also want to include the Region 19 superintendent? We don't want to just talk to Peter. We want to talk to both of them, right? At the same
Try to set up a meeting with that and the Region 19 person. What do you think, Amy? What do you think about them?
I think that is necessary, especially because the, a lot of the report was, was, that I am aware of, was, took place at Eo Smith. Because in two thousand, summer of two thousand eight, summer of two thousand nineteen is when, I think that's when they got the, the petition with listing all the concerns.
Okay, well, then I'm going to take the responsibility, try to set up a meeting with the two of them and Barbara and who else? Who can get out of work during the day? Because that's what this comes down to.
If there's no one else, I, I wouldn't mind, but because I work at the elementary school. And Peter should be able to share, because he's shared it with everyone. And the advisory team is even citizens, what the findings were.
Yeah, I know that. Okay, and he can also spring you from your responsibilities for an hour or two, and that's what we need you to do. So I'm going to try to set up a meeting with the two soups, Janine and Barbara. And for further exploratory conversations, and we will put this on the, this is going to take a while just to get the meeting set up. So we may not get to this until, this is November, we may not get to this till January. But I will give that my best shot, so that we can focus on what can we do to be of assistance in this process? And we can ask some questions about what are you doing to connect with Eastern and UConn? I suggested this years ago, nobody listened to me, but I'll do it again. Get some student teachers in there from inner-city places. We take our A-line kids and put them in Hartford, so they know who lives there. But what do we get inner-city people who are student teachers out here in the boonies, so they know who lives here? And the kids can see them. And I don't know if we do that or not. I have no idea. Quincy, what do you want to say?
One thing I'd love to share with you is I have the contact information of the, it was Yale Law School who was, who's doing this study. And it's actively, they're doing it, and they were asking for if there's teachers that want to share their experiences, schools that want to be involved. So I have the contact information for the two people running that study. And they're looking at, they're looking at like, you know, do we, are we able to come at it from a legal angle, a social angle? You know, it's a whole study, but I definitely think Mansfield would probably like to be involved. And if there's any teachers that want to share their experiences, I have the contact information. So I can send that out in the Human Rights to all of the Human Rights Commission, but
Send that out or you can put it right in the chat. If you've got a connection, if you've got the link now, you can do that. Otherwise, send it out in an email and that would be great.
Perfect. I'll just grab my computer charger.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. We want to be advocates. We're concerned about the schools. We want to give voice to the people who don't have a voice, and therefore we need to find ways to get them to speak to us. That's what I'm getting from this conversation that everybody cares about. Margaret, yes, you're on mute.
Hi, everybody, and sorry that I'm late this evening. I just wanted to fill you in that Insight Education Group is an organization that has been actively working with Mansfield Public Schools on a variety of fronts. But they specifically, Mansfield sought them out and I believe received some grant funding to look at exactly this issue, how Insight could help Mansfield in recruiting a more diverse workforce. And the video series that you can find on their website was one thing that was done. Is how do we present Mansfield as a place that someone who perhaps, you know, may have this perception of us being this middle of nowhere, not much going on here? Why in heaven's name would I want to move from a hustle-bustle, you know, university, city environment to go to the middle of northeastern Connecticut to consider taking a teaching job? So part of it, I think, was, is us marketing and being available, right? Like going, marketing in a, to a pool of candidates that don't look and feel like everybody else in Mansfield. But at the same time, how do we make them convinced that this is a great place to come and start your career? Or continue your career, that we really are a culturally diverse place with a lot of wonderful natural beauty and cultural stuff going on? So I do just want to speak up, because I've been personally involved in it, that they have been actively involved with this Insight Education Group to, to work at this marketing piece. And it's a two-way street, right? We wanted to go and find candidates from some of these other places. And we want those candidates to understand that this is a good place to come to work. And we're looking for differing points of view, because that's part of our culture. And we want our kids to have that experience. So I think your conversation with Peter, I mean, and whether you can get Peter and Sharon in one conversation, because they may each be facing different recruitment, you know, challenges. So that might be tough, but I just wanted to give you that background, because I've, you know, been involved with Kelly, you know, in trying to, to do exactly what you're talking about.
Okay, that's good. And I will try to find them online and look at their website. Okay, moving right along. We have welcomed new members. We have to elect a vice chair. Now, I would like to, now we have a quorum. So I would like to remind you all that a vice chair is simply the person who runs the meeting if I can't show up. I'm not even going to ask for an election. I'm going to ask for a volunteer. And the only thing you have to promise to do is to be reasonably willing to show up at every meeting and know how to run a meeting. Who would like to be vice chair? I'm not optimistic about the future.
I can, I can help you run meetings. That's, we got that. So anyone?
We just need somebody to put VC after their name.
I'm sorry, but we're doing some traveling, so I'm not going to be here in February. Or I won't be here next fall and September. So I don't, I'm reluctant to
Yeah, no, I understand.
Jane, will all the meetings for the upcoming year be Zoom meetings?
At the moment, unless we change our minds.
Okay, in that case, I'd like to be vice chair.
Okay. Thank you, Sabrina. All in favor of Sabrina being vice chair, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, is there anybody opposed? Whew, thank you, Sabrina. Okay, moving along again. We have under old business affordable housing check-in. And I'm not exactly sure what that's about. Do we have new information or where are we with that? Monica, what do you have to contribute on this? Anything?
The only thing that I've heard is that they are going to start meeting. They are setting up their first meeting date for the Affordable Housing Committee. So I don't know if it was Esme, someone had reached out.
You're the liaison to that. Will you just kind of get in touch with them and find out what they're doing? Thank you. And then you can just tell us. Because this is going to be a slow elephant to push along. It's going to take a long time, but we need, just as long as we know what's going on. Okay, this next one is coming up very quickly. The Winter Welcome Celebration is on December third. We have said we will come to the Winter Welcome Celebration. I have spoken to the people who run it, which is the Downtown Partnership. I have expressed to them that there are certain members of our community who are put off by the fact that there's a tree decorating contest. And it seems to have Christian overtones. Well, they showed me the trees and they don't look, you can barely see the trees for all the decorations. And they buy these trees from the Eo Smith kids, some club sells them for a fundraiser, and they don't want to stop buying these trees. So they have a bunch of trees, people come, they decorate them, and they don't really look like Christmas trees. And I decided there was no point in trying to talk them out of that. But I did share with them that I've spoken to several Muslim friends in this community, and they've all said the same thing. Make it as secular as possible. Because if you make it as secular, and Barbara said the same thing, and Amy's down her head, make it as secular as possible. Everybody will feel welcome, because they won't think it's celebrating any particular thing. So I sent them that. I said, this is the input of the Human Rights Commission. And they said, well, we're going to have a menorah and we're going to have the NAACP choir. And we're trying to get ahold of the Muslims, but they won't answer the phone. So it fell on totally deaf ears. They're going to do what they're going to do, and there's nothing we can do about it. That's just what it is. But we do have a table there, and we do have, if we're going to man, staff this table, we need to have people sitting there with our little banner and our little suggestion box telling people what we're about. And I cannot be the only one to do that. So this is on December third. The setup is at two-thirty. It runs from four to eight. I am going to suggest that they please get, everybody also said have lots of food. And there's a lot of restaurants around there, and several of them are ethnic. So maybe we can get them to come out with either purchases or samples or whatever. But I need people who can sit out in a table and say hi to everybody and talk to them. Last time Quincy did a wonderful job, went out and bought flowers and candy, so we were a little more attractive. She was really good. And we need to spread the wealth. So who can volunteer to show up on December third from around three o'clock to eight? Okay, Janine? Janine, do you have any friends? Who you could bring? Not, do you have any friends?
She's muted, but I see her laughing.
I know you have friends. Can you have friends that you can run around up to help us?
I mean, I'll even bring
Okay, now I'm going to, I'm going to ask high school people. Esme, Esme, you were there last time and you were good. Can you show up a little bit?
Yeah, I can definitely come.
Yeah, and Derek, how about you? Can you come?
Unless something else comes up, sure.
Okay, I'm putting you down, because
Inside or outside?
It's going to be outside, and that's what I'm worried about. Because the, the, welcome, the Mansfield Celebration in September was on a beautiful day. It wasn't cold. The wind was blowing and I was sick for three days after. I was sitting out there for that length of time. I just can't do that a lot. I can't be out in the weather a lot. So I need other people who are healthier than I am to sit there and smile and wave hands.
Jane, I can be there, but I'd have to come closer to five, because I already have, that goes until four.
Okay, so I'm going to
I'm sorry, I think I have a concert that night, so I will not be able to be there. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Don't worry about it. You did very well last time. All right, I'm counting on you people. I cannot do this alone. I need help. And if you have friends, bring them. Okay, and I understand the NAACP is going to be there, although nobody has said anything to me. And I don't know if we're going to partner with them or not, but I'll let you know and we'll see who shows up. Okay, thank you very much.
Can I make one suggestion? Is it possible that maybe after this year, they could like do a snowman decorating contest? It has to be the trees?
I thought about that, and then I thought about how pleased they were that they were helping a fundraising activity. And that's when I decided not to fight about it. But there's no reason why, we can suggest anything we want. So we'll suggest that after this is over. Okay, they didn't respond. I did meet with them, but what they really seemed interested in doing was telling me why everything they were doing was fine. And that doesn't often get you very far. Okay, we had a wonderful program with Debbie Irving, who talked about being white and waking up white, and we had very low attendance. And I've been kicking myself ever since, because I keep wondering, was the time, are people afraid to talk about it? But she did a great job, and she left us with some good ideas about what to do next. So I'm just going to report that our one major educational activity was of very high quality. And we need to do some more educational activities that don't cost as much. And I have an idea, and Amy, this is what I was going to talk to you about. I would like us to continue. It was, it was so small that people just sat in a circle. And after Debbie did her presentation, we all talked to each other about racism and how racism is an infection. And if you grow up here, you've got it in your brain, and you have to really work to get rid of it and to see where it's destroying people, et cetera, et cetera. And I have been wanting to do a series of conversations among people from different backgrounds about what it's like to live in Mansfield. And we've had this conversation several times. So I'm bringing it up again, because what I'd like to do is to maybe set up in the early spring, some, I said, speed dating. Maybe we could set up something, the library's been really nice, and they have a nice big room. And we could do a speed dating, talk about what your life is like in Mansfield, give people a script. And then have them move around the room and talk to each other and see who shows up. We could do that, and it wouldn't be too hard to organize. And Amy, that's what I wanted to talk to you about, because you have experience organizing these things. So we can pick that up again in December. But my goal is to get people to start talking to each other about who they are and what it's like to live here. Because I think that's how you break down barriers. So if you can think of a better way to do it, by all means, get it on the table. Janine?
My brain is already working from after listening to Debbie Irving and everything. Yesterday at the voting, at the polls, Mansfield Elementary Schools were doing their fundraiser, and they had baked goods at both schools, so, or at the polling places. So the one, I spoke with the woman, and I sat on the last PTO meeting just for kicks and giggles to see, you know, how can maybe either DEI or Human Rights Commission can go in there? Because diversification or whatever. So they're going to put me on their agenda, so I could talk for a few minutes about how maybe, you know, we can kind of help out a little bit, make a connection, make a, you know, our liaison. And thinking about what you were saying about your, your speed dating. If we can get those families who are of different cultures, of different ethnics, into these talks, what it's like for them to live in Mansfield. I think that, you know, I could, I could put that out to the, to the next PTO meeting, if you'd like.
I would love. How about everybody else? See, and invite people, there's this project that's going on globally. It's Scandinavian project, but it's going on all over the world called the Human Library, where people sign up to be a book. And then other people sign up to talk to them for a half an hour, just to find out who they are. And they're all kind of people from all kind of backgrounds, and you can just sit there. And as long as you're respectful, you can ask any question you want, and the person has committed to answering all the questions. And our library is toying with that idea to do something like that around here. So this is in that vein. And I would like to get some more conversation going on about that, because I know that when people start getting to know each other, they stop being afraid of each other, and that's what we really need to do. So I love seeing heads nod. So Janine, go ahead and do it. And then next time, Monica, let's put that on the agenda, your report from the PTO, and see what we can do with that. And I think that would be great. Anything else about waking up and white in the schools was wonderful. I will offer, if any group wants to read that book and talk about it, I will run a discussion with them and see what they have to say. And we did a two-part discussion before Debbie spoke, and it was very good. Again, very poorly attended. We had about seven or eight people, but they had a good time and they learned a lot, I think. So I'm more than ready to, any organization that you know that wants to read Waking Up White or talk about what it means to be white in this town, I will be happy to come and do a conversation with them, because it's scary to do it without a facilitator. So just put that in your, in your list of possibilities. Okay, derogatory language in the schools, what is that about? Are we having a particular current problem with that? Esme, when you take a deep breath, it means you're going to talk, so go.
Yeah, so this is something that, just, I mean, I've been in the Mansfield School Systems for like, what, twelve years? And this is something that is not new. But at least when I was a freshman, I want to say, I felt like it was, like, it seemed to be getting better as I went through the school system. And then this past year, I've noticed that it's ramped up quite a bit more. And this is something that, as much as I want to say we should advise the school and stuff, I really think we need to take a systemic approach to this and find some sort of educational This is something that needs to be not talked about with direct situations, but talked about, like, and addressed in the school as a whole and be part of the curriculum, and how to address people and what you can and cannot say. But that's my take.
Is something like that going, I'm sure that if I ask Peter or Sharon, they would say they're already doing that. Do you, are you aware of anybody making any attempt to do anything about derogatory language?
So it is on, I'm sorry, Janine, go ahead.
No, I'm, I'm listening.
Okay, so I know that after our event, certainly, I spoke to the interns and deliberations discourses is, is starting to think about holding a public forum that's looking at a number of these different things. Esme is absolutely correct. I'm having students who are reporting incidents that are pretty disturbing. We have some international students this year who have been being picked on and called names. I know that there have been members of the LGBTQIA+ community who have expressed concerns to me as well. So I am, what, I don't know how it's being addressed. I don't. But we, after we, after the reading last week, and the discussion, or after the discussion last week, we came back and we were thinking that we, there absolutely can be a public forum that we wanna look at, that dresses again, marginalized populations and how we're interacting with one another. When we did Teaching Truth last year, we had a pretty good turnout. It was virtual. But people came, and certainly people expressed their ideas. So we're, we're trying to put together what this would look like right now. And we'll certainly be coming back to all of you for additional advice, and, you know, and hopefully we can talk it up and make it something that's, that's an exciting evening. And I think Esme is right, talking about it in terms of right, how do we treat each other with dignity, respect, humanity, empathy, all these other things, compassion? How do we listen to one another? But also, how do we look at some of the things that are going on and start to tackle these things, right? Because if we're talking, we're not doing anything to confront these things. It's, nothing's happening.
So, it sounds like we may need to bring this up when we have our meeting with the superintendents this month, Shane.
Definitely.
I also just think it needs to be noted, like we're talking about in the schools, and absolutely, but also cyberbullying, like there's this whole element now that like when children leave the school. I have a case, it's not in Mansfield, it's right outside, but you know, it's right, right next door, where Discord, it's like a popular chat. I honestly, I think I'm a little too old to get it, but it's like, kids can make, or you can make groups about different topics, and then you can chat about the topics, I think. Anyway, there's a group that they've created, it's called Kill All Black People. And they take pi- pi- pictures of different students in the hallways and post them on in the group. And that's right next door, right next door. And that Discord.
What do you mean by right next to, right, like in, EDO or? Where is this group?
At, you know, students at the Charles Barrows STEM Academy have created this group and are harassing students with it, and I think we see a lot of cyberbullying. That's happening now. That's not in Mansfield per se, right next door. That's what I mean by that. However, there's instances of cyberbullying all the time. And there's instances of, of cyberbullying for, not just for racial issues, I, you know, I have a relative, I won't name his name, but I have a relative in the Mansfield School System who's being bullied online every day. Last week didn't go to school three days of the week, you know, because he has red hair. He's like a bright redhead, and he is going through the wringer. He's in, you know, he's beginning his high school, and it's just, it's just, it's really, really, really rough, because when they leave school, it's not really over. That's just, well, you know, because now we have the internet, and it just keeps going after school ends. So I just think we need to be really like, like understanding of the times that we're living in, because we didn't deal with Discord and all these different social media things a cou, you know, a couple of years ago. It was like when school was over, you were able to go home and recharge, or, you know, kind of get some support, but it doesn't end there. So I just wanna make that point.
Yep, and that's true, and I know that's true. Okay, so it sounds like we've got two big issues. One of them is the, the recruitment pipeline for persons of color to be teachers. And the other one is the rules and processes of interpersonal communication that are respectful. And what are we doing to help people learn how to treat each other with respect and to stop bullying? And bullying is a huge thing, and there's all kinds of resources for that. But are those the two big things that everybody is concerned about? The, from this conversation, and you can really get into it, okay? All right, so I'm gonna set up these meetings. I'm gonna write down those two issues. I'm gonna talk about recruitment, and I'm gonna talk about it with Peter and with Sharon, and first of all, find out what's going on, and then say, what is it that we can do to expand and support? And Janine is gonna do it with the PTO. And then several people are gonna show up on December third around three o'clock to help me set up. Oh, and the other thing we need for that Christmas thing, which isn't a Christmas thing, is we need lights. So if you have any camping lights, you know, like big flashlights or electric, what do you call them? Yeah, what do you call them? Lanterns? Because I have a generator now, and I have none of the other stuff anymore. I used to have a total campout in my house, but I don't have that anymore. So does anybody own camping lanterns or any kind of electronic flashlight, big stuff? You have, one is fine. You bring one, I'll buy one. Again, ask your friends, talk to your camping friends, find out what you can round up, because it's gonna get dark very early, and people need to see our faces. So that's why we need these on the table. Okay. Member report, Monica.
Um, we would like to add that list of meeting schedules to the agenda under new business.
Oh, yes.
Can we have a motion and a?
Monica? Okay, Amy asked that we vote on the list of the meeting agenda schedule for the next year. Second to that motion, please. Esme, seconds. We've gone over the schedule. We have the one issue of a meeting during school vacation time, but I've checked, and it doesn't seem to conflict with any official holidays. So I think we're clean at the moment. So can I call for a vote? We, are you willing to adopt next year's agenda as Monica put together? All in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? Okay. Thank you. All right. We're done. Is there anything else?
I know I don't wanna keep you guys here to, you know, continually bring up things. I know we're finishing. But I'd love to maybe add it to the agenda for next meeting, since I know we're all trying to get out. But I, I have, I have noticed that we, when we have big events, we do like the National Anthem, and we were singing that, but I'd love to suggest that we also include maybe the Black National Anthem, like lift every voice and sing sometimes, or we switch it up sometimes as a town, because oftentimes, that's, that's really, that's the one that's sung, and every, you know, and, and we sang it at the convention, and I was like, you know, I would really, really appreciate if our town, if some people knew this, if they knew it was, and also, you know, if they knew what the Black National Anthem was, and if we sang. But I know that's a whole can of worms, and I'm sorry to bring it up at eight o'clock.
No, I love it. I love it. That's one of my favorite songs. But here's the other thing I have that I haven't mentioned. I am gonna meet with either Ben, probably with Ben, and say, we need a little more support from the town council. We need you to notice that we're here, and we don't know whether you wanna come talk to us, or if some of us should come talk to you, but would you please pay attention to us? And in that context, what Quincy just brought up would be the appropriate place to do it. So I've got that on my agenda. I'm gonna be chatting with a few people over the next month, and I will bring that up, because I think the town council really needs to pay more attention to us if we're gonna get any traction. And so that's what I'm gonna ask for. And we'll see where it goes. Okay. Anybody else? Margaret, I had one more question. Yes. The lights all need to be battery lives, lights, so whatever you bring, I mean, you can buy them. They're all over the place. You just have to have them.
There's one more thing that I'm doing, of course, you know, with the kids. Morning announcements at the Mansfield Elementary School. And I said, well, why, why don't we, because, you know, there's things that come up, whether it's celebrations, or like this is Native American Heritage Month. You know, let's put some information in there. So I'm pushing the buttons to get that included a little bit in the morning announcements. So anyone has any information about certain things that pop up, I might be able to include that into the morning announcements. You know, they have a few minutes, and it's broadcasted. It looks like real news for the kids, and they're really excited about it, so it grasps their attention. So in regards to Quincy, in regards to the song, I mean, I know it's, it's off. We could still incorporate it, but especially when it's Black History Month. If we can give me that information, I can put that in there for the morning announcements and say, hey, let's take a look at this, you know, and I'll give it to the teacher who's running that, that thing. And so, yeah, any information like that, bring, you know, just send it to me, everything, and then I'll, I'll try to get that in the, in the morning announcements for you.
It's good, and we can get some little fact, I mean, just the simplest thing of, do you know whose land you're living on? For Native American History Month ought to be there, and the names of those tribes should be there, and so that's a thing to do. If you can. Okay, Margaret, I have one private question to ask you after this is over, if you wouldn't mind staying for a minute. But can I have a motion for adjournment, please? To adjourn second? Somebody? Wave your hand. Sabrina, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you very much. I will see you in a month, and I will be in touch with you in between, and I want you to know, when you answer my, if I send you an email, please tell me you got it, because I get really freaked out if I don't think anybody's paying attention. So I appreciate it if you would just say, hi, I got it. Thank you very much. Okay, thank you, and Margaret, I need to talk to you just for one minute. Thanks, everybody. Okay, Margaret. I don't know where Velda is. I haven't heard a word from her, but we have another woman who's been on this commission since the beginning, who never shows up. And I think it's time to ask her, and I have written to her, and she has a hearing problem, and I've asked her if she needs hearing support so that she can participate in the meeting. She doesn't respond to me. And it's, I'm feeling like, okay, you don't wanna be here anymore, and I would be perfectly happy if you used your time to do other things, since we don't have any, this last bunch of appointments has a termination date, but I don't think any of us have termination dates, so I just figure it's kind of a messy conversation. We do have termination dates.
You all do. This is a question for me, actually, I think. So yes, we do all have termination dates. I can pull it up in one second.
Yeah, tell me when it is.
Just gonna take me a minute to open the spreadsheet. We are so anyone who was appointed with you has a termination date of seven, one of twenty twenty-three. Anyone who is newer does have different expiration dates. Those are based on the fact that there was an issue when we first appointed everybody, and we're supposed to appoint staggering terms and did not. So now everybody has a different date.
Okay.
So that's that. When we're talking about Virginia, I'm assuming is the person that, okay. So what I would do, and this is what Glenn's practice was, was that he reached out to anyone who he thought might want to leave. You email them, say, listen, if, you know, you would like to resign, please let me know. We appreciate all your work, you know. Thank you for coming, basically, and if they resign, then you forward that email right on to me. I will then take it. I will mark it, and we will have an open position.
Okay.
Now, if that does not work, or you do not hear back, what we'll do is we will add it to our agenda as a, this person has missed three consecutive meetings unexcused. Now, that would then be that we would vote to actually remove her.
Okay.
And I would then have to send a letter and all, there's a lot of backend stuff to let her know that she is no longer on the mission. So those are our options.
Okay, well, I, I, I don't. The thing that makes me the craziest is when I ask a question and nothing happens. Vacuums are very difficult for me, and I have not heard a word from her. I have heard from Velda from time to time, but I have not heard from her. And.
Monica and I, I consulted Monica on it for another committee that this person has served on and didn't have luck reaching by email, and so I actually have her phone number, and I actually was able to reach her by phone and have a conversation. You know, and, and it was actually at the end of the person's term, and, you know, do you wanna continue or, or don't you, and, you know, and actually was able to, so we do have a phone number, which is another way to consider.
Yeah.
You know, I'm gonna put it in the chat to you, actually, because I don't want that to go publicly. This is all going to be.
Yeah, the problem with this person is that she has a hearing difficulty, so that you don't know what the best way to communicate is. But I will write that down.
Okay. Yeah, I I agree that, you know, we should definitely reach out to her. I would tell her, like, you know, if you do want to resign, please let us know through email. We do need, we need a physical resignation letter. It can be something as simple as Jane, I'd like to resign from the HRC. Very simple. She can even just email me. If that, and I'll let you know. But yes, so there's the process. If you do not hear from her by the next meeting, when I call to do the agenda, I will make a note that we will add it to our agenda if you see fit.
Okay.
That is your decision. That is not, you know, mine or really anyone else's.
Okay, and I'm, I'm gonna talk to Angela Walker at Eastern about that Human Library thing, because I know her. So this could be a really good connection. I think that's, and our library is wonderful. I mean, I am enthusiastically wanting to do more stuff with them. They're really, really good, so. Okay, that's all I'm worried about at the moment. I am profoundly relieved that Debbie Irving is over. And that we didn't have any disruptions. I never did, I haven't done that much worrying since I was employed gainfully. I don't like it, and I don't wanna do it again.
Yeah. Yeah, it took a lot of energy, that whole program, but in talking to Leslie today, she stopped in to the town manager's office. There may be other authors that are available to us through that national service that our library is connected to, where we might choose another book, and we can get access to these authors to zoom in and discuss their books, so. Yeah, I think I would like to do that. I like the Human Library idea also as a way to connect with people in our community, and I think that might be, you know, something kind of fresh and, and we could, you know, attract a diversified group of people, because we could ask them personally, would you be in our library? But I think that there may be other authors that we can tap into for free through this program, and Leslie and Vicky would probably help connect us with, you know, the best authors to do that, so.
Yeah, I, I'll make a note to myself. I'm willing to do anything if it doesn't interfere with my practicing my clarinet.
Sorry about that. That was where I got you this morning. The other thing that I was wondering, did you take notes from Debbie Irving's visitor?
Did I take notes?
Yeah, do you have any? No, okay. I was just curious.
I read the book, and most of what she said was in the book, so it's what would you do? I was wishing we could have recorded it, but I knew that was not gonna be permitted.
Yeah, I thought if, if there were some notes, I would be happy to type them up and send them to everybody. I'm a pretty quick typer, but.
Yeah, I took a few. I don't know if they would be useful to anybody, right? And I did also take some pictures. So Jane, one of the things I will do, try to do a social media post with a few pictures of the group and of her presenting, just to recap that we hosted this, and that the books are still available, and if you you know, and do it, use it as a plug for HRC.
That's a good idea. I'll make some bullet points of, of some of the main points that she made.
Yeah, if you even have it handwritten, you can take a picture of it and email it to me, and I'm happy to.
My, my typing is much better than my handwriting. I will do that, and then you can use it in the PR if you want to. You will have it for your records. And I will get to that as soon as I can.
I'm usually the note taker.
Bored in August. I am not bored. I don't know how I can get everything done anymore, but anyway, that's fine.
Well, at least you have a vice chair, so that's wonderful.
Yeah, and I don't have any idea what that's worth, but it's at least something. I mean, the, the silence when you ask for volunteers is awful. But I, we did, we were in the middle of a, I got them revved up again, so people are thinking about things, and that's one of the things we agreed to do, but and I don't know where Velda is. Whoops, Velda may have had the wrong time. Velda, are you there? Whoops, Velda may have had the wrong time. Velda, are you there? Hi, we missed you. Our meeting started at 7 o'clock.
Actually, I actually work on Wednesday nights. I work with African American Cultural Centers. I had this student come in. So, um, I was just like, let me just come and check and see if you are still on.
Oh, well, that's great. We're glad you did. That and it's so nice to see you. I was beginning to get really worried.
No, I just, I just got caught up, um, talking to a student. So, um, I'm I should have sent an email, but.
Yeah, that would be really nice. I was telling everybody, makes me feel better if I know what's going on. Um, let me just tell you one thing, Velda, we're going to participate in the winter welcome thing on December 3rd. And it goes from about 4 o'clock in the afternoon to 8:00. And we need people to sit at our booth and welcome and shake hands and everything. Um, and we also need people, if you have camping lanterns or big flashlights, because they're not going to have power and we're going to need lights. So look at your family's schedule and see if you can come there and sit and smile and shake hands. Okay?
Okay. All right. December 3rd.
Wear very warm clothes and bring your whole family.
Oh, trust me, when when I'm already wearing warm clothes.
Yeah, this is not your native environment. I understand that.
Yes, exactly. The, okay, um, is an email going to be, what is it called? I can put it on my calendar.
Of the winter.
Winter welcome.
Winter. Non-denominational celebration of winter, but it's becoming a very multi-faith denomination celebration of winter and that continues to be a problem, but we're still working on it.
Okay. So what time you said from four to what?
It's from 4:00 to 8:00.
Four to eight. Okay, all right. Or PM, sorry. Okay. All right. Yes. Sorry, sorry about that again.
Bring Terrence. He's always out there wanting to get everybody involved. So that would be really good.
Yeah, yeah, but we we all will come. Yes.
Wonderful.
All right, welcome, uh, Mansfield. Okay. All right. More information will be coming out, I I imagine.
Uh, I'll I'll send another note out to everybody. Yeah.
All right. All right. All right. So sorry about that again. Hope you all have a good night. Take care.
Yeah, and Velda, one quick, quick thing, if you could provide and you can send it to Jane or CC me, you know, however, but we're just looking for little bios uh, about all of our HRC members. And I had that wonderful picture of you and Terrence and your little girl, whose name I don't know, that first day of school and I cropped that. Um, but if and you can use that or send me another picture, but I'd just love to have a a little bio about you so we can put that up on our website. So in your spare time, right?
No, I I actually have a bio for for here. So I'll just send.
I bet. Oh, good. Okay.
I just have, I will just send you what I have right now because let me just make a note because if I don't then.
You'll forget.
And I'm right here. I'm working until nine tonight. So I'll just send it right now. Okay. Okay, all right.
Great. Thank you for that.
No problem. Take it. Hope you all have a good night.
Okay, you too. Thank you, everybody. And I'll be in touch as appropriate. Take care.
Sounds good.